My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting of the Wahoo City Council, Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, seven o'clock. Announcement of the Open Meetings Act that's posted on the wall over there. We don't have any brochures over here right now, but if you need one, they're, uh, would be available at City Hall. Call the meeting to order, and roll call, please.
Stuart Kirchi.
Here.
Orion ideas.
Here.
Carl Warford.
Here.
Karen Booth.
Here.
Chris Rappel.
Patrick Nabel.
Yeah, we do have a forum. Proclamations, or we do have a proclamation, uh, for Municipal Clerks Week next week. And we appreciate our clerk. And every city, uh, does a lot of the paperwork, uh, and all the legal stuff, getting it ready for the meeting and, uh, a lot of other responsibilities, but from my standpoint, it's preparing us, uh, for the meeting and getting the attendance put together and out, so. I have a copy of it, but, uh, I'll pass on, on reading it. Uh, audience comments on items that are not on the agenda. We've moved this to the early part of the meeting. So if one, somebody wants to make some comments and doesn't want to sit through the entire meeting, we've moved it to the beginning. So it's the same procedure. It used to be at the very end. Anybody in the audience have something they want to bring up that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we'll move on. Uh, Department Head reports.
Yes, um, we're glad to welcome you all to the library for city council meetings, so welcome. And let us know if there's anything that you need or that we can do to make your meetings run more smoothly. Um, we have a lot going on at the library coming up. The Saturday is the, uh, free shredding event. So if you have items to shred, you can bring them to the north parking lot between ten and noon on Friday, or Saturday morning, and we'll shred them for you, uh, no charge, of course. Um, the city helps fund that through the, um, I think it's the recycling fund or something?
Solid Waste.
Solid Waste, thank you. I knew there was a fund that paid that bill, so we're happy for that. And we're gearing up for summer, lots of programs coming up and events, and so kind of watch. If you're not following us on our Facebook, you can also sign up to receive the library newsletter. Just opt in with your email address, just let us know, and we'll send that to you every month. We promise not to send you any spam or cat videos or anything like that, so. I don't think I have anything else right now, so, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Travis?
Nothing to report.
Other than what's on the agenda, so. Chief Joe, any comments?
Uh, nothing, nothing really, no. I'd just like to say, uh, thanks, Melissa, for getting us a grant. She got us a grant through water to get a new gun safe, uh, for Department of Fisher, our guns are secure. That's about all that we have going besides the regular case stuff.
Okay, okay, thank you. Sure, any, any others? Look like Department Heads. Melissa.
Uh, the only thing that I have to report is that, uh, the Finance Committee did need to review the results of the salary survey that you authorized having done in, um, last November. And so I'll, we talked through that with the Finance Committee, um, talked through with the Board of Public Works. We're gonna be having, uh, some, a meeting with employees, uh, the first week of May, and then the final proposal will come to you at the next council meeting for consideration, for implementation of those findings.
Okay, so, anything?
Nothing, no.
Christine, anything? No, okay.
I, I actually, I'm just gonna go ahead and, um, just report to you on the, um, on the consent agenda item.
Okay.
So you, uh, if you recall, a few weeks ago or a month or so ago, we off, agreed that we would put the pay apps, um, and change orders on the consent agenda, and you have two pay applications on the agenda, on the consent agenda as well as a change order number one. Um, I just wanted to offer a little explanation on that change order. This is an issue that we have, uh, been dealing with at Seventeenth and Linden for quite a few years. Uh, we've worked with J D O several times to try to get it resolved. It's just very flat. And when the overlay work was done in that area, there was some drainage that caused the water to flow towards the property owner's property in their garage, and so, uh, J D O has agreed that they will take on the brunt of this change order, um, with the balance being something that we would normally do, um, in, if we were doing an overlay project in that area. So, um, if you have any questions on that, I, I would be glad to address them now, um, unless you wanna pull the items specifically off the consent agenda.
Anything that you wanna take off of the agenda?
I would make motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I would second that.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion and a second? If not, roll call on approving the consent agenda.
Warford?
Yes.
Kirchi?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, three public hearings. The first one, uh, public hearing regarding the application received from the Nebraska Liquor Control on behalf of Flatwater Spirits to obtain a Class Z liquor license. I'll open this up to the public, uh, unless somebody from the city wants to lead off with explanations.
I don't think so. I think this is a little unusual in the sense that it is a distiller's license, uh, so it's a unique classification, but it's processed the same, which is to say, Liquor Control Commission reviews it, makes recommendations that it meets all of the state statutory obligations. It's sent to you guys largely, A, to make sure that if Chief as an example has a concern with respect to the issue, or there's, say, a zoning concern, that you have an opportunity to raise that, uh, at that point. I'm not aware of, of any of those issues, but that's really kind of the, the reason it goes in front of the, the city council.
Yeah. The dual in Class Z is a micro, so it is small amounts.
Yes.
I was trying to read the small amounts. I wasn't able to.
Yeah, so you, basically, I think, if, if we're I sitting on the city council, the operative question is where is this located, right? And is it, if it's located as an example or residential neighborhood, maybe we would have some concerns with respect to its use, even if it, it was either a permitted use or a conditional use, we still might have concerns. Um, as I understand it, at least here, that it's not the case, so some of those concerns about disruptions of neighbors, safety, danger, that sort of thing would be, um, obviously reduced.
Okay, is the applicant present to?
Sir.
Okay, do you wanna give us a summation of what you're gonna be doing?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, come, come forward, present your name and address.
So Graham Roop, uh, the distillery is, uh, one five six nine Commercial Park Road, just north of John Deere, the old Six B building. Um, live in Omaha, came from small town Nebraska, so Wahoo seemed really cool to me when I was looking for a place to put a distillery. Um, I don't know how, what questions you have. Micro distillery is under a hundred thousand gallons a year out the door according to the state of Nebraska. We won't be there anytime soon, although we'd love to be. Actually, we would love to be in front of the legislature asking for more, but we're not gonna be there anytime soon. Um, again, have fallen in love with Wahoo, been here about three years out of that building, run a food truck out of there as well, and know some of you, sort of a little bit, maybe. But, um, yeah, really excited about it, hoping to bring a lot of jobs and tax money to Wahoo.
Okay, thank you. Um, opened up the public hearing officially. Uh, you've received some information from our, uh, legal counsel for the city and for the operator, from the operator. Is there any comments or questions from the public in the public setting? I'll ask one more time. This is a public hearing. Any comments or questions from the public?
Okay, motion to close the public hearing.
Second? Motion made and second to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Kirchi?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Now, uh, the, uh, the application itself, is there any questions from the council?
Make a motion to approve.
It would be, it would be a recommendation of approval to the Liquor Control Commission, so.
So moved?
So, like, legally, it would be worth it. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Yep, second.
Second over here. Okay, uh, any questions? Ask all. Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Kirchi?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number two, public hearing regarding the request for a conditional use permit on ending ordinance eighteen eighty-six, uh, the Wahoo zoning ordinance section five point twelve C one, count downtown commercial zoning district to include apartments and condominiums on the first floor or the ground level. The action would be to, uh, look at approving this ordinance.
Just for, just for clarification, the public hearing is, is on an amendment to our zoning regulations, not actually for a conditional use application. It would be to allow what is being proposed as a conditional use.
Okay. There's a developer here that wants to talk about, I think you're the one that brought this to the city zoning committee.
Yeah.
Name, please.
Good afternoon. Uh, Mike Sullivan. Um, I believe, um, you know, the importance of modifying or amending the conditional use, uh, to allow apartments on the main floor, uh, of commercial buildings downtown is important to the growth of Wahoo. Um, I really think, uh, if done correctly, uh, specifically, uh, it can help reorch, uh, reorchestrate the downtown fabric of the commercial spaces, the public spaces, the parks, um, as well as the living spaces downtown. And I'm hoping that this amendment, uh, will allow that door to open to improve the fabric and, and make it a little bit stronger downtown. Um, I'm attached, uh, through previous emails, uh, a few case studies to kind of reiterate and give some background to my reason why. Uh, I think this would be important, uh, to, to Wahoo. Um, I, I do have a, a project specific that I'd like to do this for, but this is a general, um, blanket comment. I think this could be, uh, very beneficial to the entire downtown Wahoo. As I go through the streets of Wahoo, downtown Wahoo, I notice a few vacant lots, uh, that, yes, they can be, uh, built as commercial retail space, uh, but they haven't been. Um, I don't own those lots, but those are open, open areas of opportunity for people to come in and build retail, build office, um, to fit that area. Um, I think that is needed, uh, but I also think it is needed to have residential as a focus, uh, of downtown Wahoo. Uh, and to do that, I think allowing, uh, again, specific, specifically to have residents on the first floor of some areas of downtown could help that.
Thank you. Um, Travis, or comments from planning and zoning?
Yeah, so the Planning Commission did, uh, had told the public hearing, uh, it was tabled once to look at a little bit better and kind of look at it as a whole. Like Melissa said, it is an amendment to the C one downtown, so it would be, um, any C one zone area. So they really wanted to focus on that and certainly not take away from the downtown commercial. Any amendment is not project specific. So it got tabled, uh, we had the meeting last, well, the first meeting here in April. Uh, so we visited that. There was a motion on the table to, um, recommend approval of that with the condition that, uh, basically if it was residential abutting across the street, um, excluding Chestnut and Fifth Street, I believe, was the wording. That way we would not have apartments on the main level in the actual part of downtown. Um, but if you had, um, residential across the street, then maybe that would be a good place for it. It's failed.
Three to two.
Three to two. Um, so we did not have another motion to recommend or not recommend the amendment. So it's just left as, as that. They, the Planning Commission did talk quite a bit that they thought maybe it was a good idea, but really was reluctant to commit to that because of every situation that maybe is possible. Uh, the big thing, like I said, was Chestnut, you know, being as they don't feel that C one is a proper fit for Chestnut, they really didn't wanna have apartments, um, on that level. Another thing that was talked about was the, uh, you know, the man caves that we've got. Uh, you know, if someone could convert those to an apartment or something of that nature, whether that's really what was needed or wanted downtown, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, officially opened up the public hea- hearing. You've heard, uh, the interested developer, and you've heard from, uh, our zoning administrator. Uh, any comments, questions from the public on this, uh, particular request, uh, for conditional use permit? Again, I'll ask, any comments from the public? Yes, come forward, please. State your name.
Sandy Sullivan, and I am related to each other, um, but, but I also am a resident here, and so I do know the importance of apartments and ground level apartments, especially for, you know, not only our elderly or seniors, but maybe for young families with strollers and whatnot, and accessibility to downtown, um, senior centers right there, civic centers right there, um, within walking distance to the whole downtown area, that that's important, um, for placement for people in, in apartments, um, so that they can access Wahoo a little bit better and a little bit easier, so.
Okay, thank you. Take your name, address?
Teresa Klein, Rural Route Two, no, Wahoo, um, Director of the Chamber of Economic Development here in Wahoo. Um, housing remains our number one issue. Um, I in no way, um, know the zoning regs like the, the zoning commission and, um, don't in any way want to infringe on that. But, uh, if there is a way to have additional developments happen, providing additional housing options for this community, I really appreciate the council taking a look at that. And I know that we like our downtown, we love our downtown, um, and space is getting to be at a premium. However, if conditions are made that it is appropriate, for instance, the facing residential makes perfect sense, I hope you guys consider it because a variety of housing needs exist, whether it's one bedroom, two bedroom apartments, ground floor, upper floor, but I appreciate you guys taking a look at the options.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Again, state your name and address.
Um, Tracy Flickler, fifteen forty-three North Linden Street. Um, I am here as a public, but I'm also in planning commission. I don't know, I'm speaking as a public person, though. Um, I think that there has been a lot of time and effort and resources put into revitalizing, um, and maintaining Wahoos, Wahoos downtown to get and keep businesses there, um, that there's much greater need for commercial space on the ground floor. And then it, that is what is intended on the ground floor of multi-story buildings in Wahoos downtown. Regardless of the park across the street or resi- zen- residential, excuse me, zoning, abutting the downtown area, um, I don't think that ground floor apartments are needed. Yes, housing is a huge thing. I don't disagree with that at all. I just don't think that downtown, um, is a huge need, I guess. Um, I also have questions maybe about the historic preservation overlay district, which I understand is not currently maybe enforced, but I think that I don't, I don't know that it's the best idea for Wahoo to lose that either, and if more housing downtown, I don't know what that looks like, but I think that's worth looking at. Um, and again, I don't think that one specific project should, um, I think once, if you, one specific project should not necessarily weigh the overall conditional use for the entire C one, and I feel like long term it could potentially, um, for lack of a better term, open a can of worms that maybe wasn't intended. Um, so I would just oppose the ground floor apartments in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a specific area that this is referring to?
Anything that's adjacent to, um, so from downtown with C one, anything that faces residential. So think of, uh...
Yeah, Mike, uh...
So there's not a specific spot right now that is wanting this?
This would include the whole C one, but I, I think there's rumor out there that where it might be located, uh, on the east end of Fifth Street.
That's what I was wondering.
Is the, the applicant for the zoning change, the, the language as proposed and that failed in the Planning Commission, was that promoted or accepted by the applicant? Or does that deter what was intended?
No, I...
In terms of, you have an idea of some, what projects you might be looking at? If it's limited only to the areas that are joined those other zoning classifications, does that defeat the purpose?
That does not defeat the purpose, no. Um, the purpose of my amendments, uh, to the zoning code is to take organic steps to be allowed to do apartments on the first floor. Um, I can specify the location if it needs to come to that, uh, if that's a step in the development process to work with the city, uh, to allow this on one block, across the street from single family, uh, across the street from a park, uh, across the street that's tasteful to the downtown that doesn't deter from the commercial space. Um, I'm open to those, you know, options and ideas. Um, but I, I was taking the first step to get to that as a result. So, um, yeah, this, this can take some, some twists and turns to get to the end result of allowing, um, areas of the downtown to have well-built, specific apartments on the first floor. Um, not man, not modified man camps or anything like that, legit apartments, look-like apartments, fit the downtown character, um, of, of what's there, you know, taking aspects of, you know, what was built new to make it look historic, similar to Wahoo State Bank, et cetera. So, um, you know, um, that's where I'm trying to get to, so. Um, yes, I do have a couple, uh, targeted areas that I'm, you know, looking into. Uh, I don't want those to persuade, um, this either way, um, because there are other open areas in the downtown area that I can maybe get into as well. But I like to keep those, you know, like the Wigwam and other vacancy spots as what they were created for, uh, to come back to commercial space, um, for what they were intended for back previously, so.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, one more time, any comments from the public before we close the hearing? I think we're ready for a motion.
Motion to close the public hearings.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion second to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Kirchi?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Okay, uh, discussion from the council, um, A would be, uh, approval or action on ordinance twenty-three ninety-three, amending zoning regulation C one to allow conditional use for ground level permit by apartments.
So, as this is written to me, avoiding, you know, the specific areas that we know aren't going to stay C one to begin with, so we don't wanna cause ourselves problems there. Um, talking about only where the base is outward, and it doesn't open it up for not only all of C one or even those areas, but it only opens it up for the possibility of a conditional use permit. And or as part of those conditions, we could set something to the effect of, you know, it needs to be a tasteful building that would fit within a commercial district, you know. There's conditions you can put on that outside of just allowing it for anybody who happens to be facing, you know, a residential area, so. To me, while I, I understand the, the desire to try to maintain the downtown area to be a downtown area, on some level, we have to acknowledge there are, to me, and I've said it several times, I feel like our biggest problem in the city right now is housing. We just can't get enough housing. And if it takes steps, uh, on the edges of downtown, I realize this isn't a long-term fix, but sometimes we still have to deal with what's in front of us first, and if somebody wants to, to get some more housing and it faces the park, and we can set conditions on it, I guess I'm, I'm for that.
One comment, I guess I would have just a language issue if you do consider it, is if the intent is to allow any building, cause it's red, located adjacent to that, or is the intent to allow any building that is both located adjacent and facing the residential zoning district to allow it? Because this is just as located adjacent, so hypothetically, a building could be adjacent to it or a series of buildings pointed the other direction, and the question being whether or not that matters to you. It's, you're a policymaker, you guys decide if it matters to you, but what, what the face of the building is, should that be prescribed or not in the ordinance?
I'd be curious what their, in, if the intent was to try to make it facing residential, that would make probably more sense to me.
Yes, I believe.
Yeah. You know, I know on the surface, I, I, it, it sounds to me like a, it, it would work well, and the, and the more I'm looking at it, the more I'm thinking about it, the more complicated it's becoming to me. And when you start changing C one or, or a zoning district in its entirety, there are always those unintended consequences. Um, uh, the conditional use is probably the best approach to it. Uh, but, you know, uh, you're in a downtown area that, that thankfully, we already have a parking problem. I don't know if this is gonna help it.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's, it's nice to have a parking problem, but I, I can't imagine having more apartments without having, you know, uh, something addressed, and that would come out and make you just...
I was gonna say, that's where I look at the conditional use and think that's...
Yes, you know, so, I guess I'm, I've struggled with it, and, and I'm, I'm somewhat having a hard time doing the overall, you know, especially when you had the Planning Commission, I think, has spent two meetings at it, had it tabled once, brought it back, and then declined it. And I, I, if you did talk to that, I'd appreciate it.
Right. The, the motion at the Planning Commission, the, was to move forward with approval. That motion itself failed three to two. There were no further motions. Sometimes the Planning Commission will bring forward a motion to specifically deny.
Okay.
And that comes to the city council. Like, I think in the C one, no, not that. There have been times when they bring forward a motion specifically to deny. That was not the case in this situation.
But, but the thought process n- not to approve, I guess I would have, I, I...
Well, I, I, I would, the only reason why I say that is I was at the Planning Commission, and there was a specific question by the chair saying, "Do you want to consider a motion to deny?" And there was no action taken by the Planning Commission.
Okay.
I do know at the Planning Commission, one of the concerns was about the, um, single level man caves, for lack of, you know, that were presented as commercial property when they were constructed, and having them, that do a but, or face residential properties, and having them be turned into an apartment. One of the things we've talked about in, if this is something you wanna move forward with, that it, read in that it must be a multi-level or multi-story this building. I don't know whether that complicates things even further, Stuart, or...
A- and, and in, in one place it, it mentions retail on the first floor on Fifth Street and Chestnut, and then I thought I saw somewhere else where it was a, a larger area, uh, I wasn't...
Yeah, beach and London, um, Maple.
Are you talking in the, in the Planning Commission minutes?
Right.
Yeah. They did, they did have to discuss that.
I picked up some other areas, yeah. I had just made a, made a couple of phone calls to get a good idea on the, on the reasons for the, the no votes. And, um, the feedback that I had was just that there was probably a, a good idea in here, but it just didn't have time to get all the, maybe details worked out. So, you know, whether that be a second story or a multi-story...
So, you know, whether that be a second story or a multi-story, um, being a condition or being something written into this that would help make that more palatable? And, and is that something we recommend here, or is it something that planning should still explore?
I mean, your prerogative, I mean, basically, to me, you have three options here. If you, if you're not supportive of it, you would simply not pass it at this point, and it would stop. If you're supportive of it, but you want the planning commission to be significantly involved in the further development of it, I would think you would table it and then ask that the planning commission put it on its next agenda for further discussion and, and conditions. If you didn't feel like the planning commission needed to be involved, because they've already been involved, then you could make some changes yourself, pass it on first reading, because you don't have a super majority anyways, and yourself start developing what, what changes those would be, I mean, it's your prerogative which way you want to go, but I think those are, in my mind, the three options.
Well, there was not, I mean, there were people missing here, but there was also people missing at planning and zoning that probably were the first need, but not the second need. Uh, to me, um, with history, we've had a C one. I don't want necessarily always throw it back, planning and zoning, but, uh, I think we need some help before we figure out conditional uses, so.
I'm not comfortable with where it is now.
I would say that's where my mind went, is, is as it reads here, and with the concerns that were alluded to in the, in the minutes with the, the single level buildings that could maybe be converted, then, you know, I, those are valid concerns, I think, converting that style of building to, to apartments, so. I maybe am not as excited about the way it's worded here, but I think it's the start of something that could probably fit.
So I, I'd look at it the other way, the more restrictive we get, or the more pointed we get onto things, something we inevitably have to walk back later, or take another look at later, because there's this other unique situation that now we walked ourself out of, we're locked ourself out of, and we've got to do something else to try to get into it. So to me, the fact that it's set up as a conditional use, means we can make that evaluation later. Somebody comes and says that, and say, sure, you can put apartments on that lot, they need to be multi-story so that they fit with the downtown feel. And we can add those as we go along, but the more restrictive we are upfront, the more we have to work that later when those things come up, at least that's the way. So that's the only reason I thought, I like it the way it is, because it says these are the areas we could do it, and we'll come up with the how and why when that comes in front of us. Because otherwise, if we start to get really pointed with what we've won, then it starts to sound like we're looking at, you know, a senior project or something to that effect. I try to leave it a little more, to me, the more open it is, the easier it is to work with, otherwise we're locking ourselves into something, so.
Uh, this is the council discussion, but since we're talking about ba- planning and zoning, and that, uh, a member of the planning and zoning, I think would like to speak.
Well.
Come forward again.
I think Mike Grab probably had a comment too, but how do you, once you put something in a conditional use, how do you decide? How do you decide over and over again, well, we like this, but we don't like that, and we like this, or we don't like that? And then you get the whole, you get back to the, well, why who doesn't want to do this, and why who doesn't want to do that? And, oh, you have to be so-and-so to do something, or, you know, I feel like in th- the way this is sitting right now, puts you i- back in that box that you're saying you're trying to get out of, Carl. I think that it, it, it also opens that can of worms where you come up with that backlash a little bit, too. Um, I personally, again, I don't think that this should be a hard no, I just think that it needs more time and finessing to be in the best interest of the city for the future in all cases. That's all I would say.
Just an idea, but would it be possible if, if you're inclined to keep the ball rolling on this, do first reading on this ordinance, and send it back to the planning commission for a language basically establishing, if it would move forward, establishing that you're interested in doing this, but that you need assistance in developing the language? I don't know if that is even a possibility.
I, I, I think we are headed in the, in the right direction, but it's, I would just want to make sure we don't regret doing something ten years down the road.
Yeah, and, and I, one hundred percent, it's like planning looks at this stuff a whole lot more than we do, right? Um, so I, I, I hate the idea, I said that when I first saw this, and I, I don't want to do anything against what planning recommends unless, you know, it's really a glaring obvious thing to me, so, I, you know, sending it back, I don't, I don't have a problem with that either. I like it this way, but I'm the only one person.
If it, if it would move forward with the, uh, first reading, um, and you would ask it to go back to the planning and zoning, uh, the general committee does, is the liaison between the council and planning and zoning. Um, maybe the general committee, uh, be at the planning and zoning meeting, so you can't have a quorum there with council. But those three could represent the council and at least get input.
Is there a planning commission meeting between this meeting and the next council meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So it wouldn't have to skip a council meeting? Yeah, and that certainly is, is fine to do, to keep the ball rolling. I think the important thing, and I think you're, you're doing it, which is to say, if I'm sitting on the planning commission, what do you want us to do, right? Rather than just throw it back to them, you know, Carl's input, which is, I, I like it as is, but if you're gonna tinker with it, I might be a little skeptical of how much you tinker with it, versus, you know, Stu and, and Ryan, what your comments are. I think as long as you're clear enough to Travis and company of what your thoughts are, so that they don't spin their wheels, bring it back, and it looks nothing like something you would pass, I think that's, that's certainly fine.
A- and I think planning commission was on track with, with putting retail on first floor in some designated areas. And, and I know there's been multiple areas talked about, um, but I, I think that's worth fleshing out even farther. And, and, you know, the, the abutting territories of zoning is important for, you know, the, the apartments springing up that you, you didn't think belonged in this area, but because of how we laid this out today, we inadvertently allowed that. Um, you know, downtown does need to remain downtown, and, and I don't want to get nibbled away with, with apartments, but I do think apartments upstairs is, is perfectly fine, we've got a lot of unused space up there. So i- it's hard for me to, to want to slow us down a little bit on, on proposed housing when, when we already have some stock that's available that really hasn't had the money spent on it. So it's, i- i- it's, it just turns complicated quickly. And I think planning and zoning, they've wrestled with this a couple of times, maybe they can wrestle with it again.
No, we haven't wrestled with it, but will wrestle with it.
Is it better to pass, I mean, are we gaining any ground really in passing a, a first ordinance, or is it better, or the first round, or was it better to just table it, send it back to them?
I, I, I think it gives us. Really doesn't matter, I think the, the passing, the difference to me is that by passing the first reading, you're indicating you're, you're more supportive of the measure than if you would simply table it. Tabling it to me is, uh, an indication that there's a real question mark of if, if you would pass any of it. But that's just how I view it, too.
Well, where I str- where I struggle on that is that I don't like it in, in its format, but I like the concept. And I like the start of what it has, has done, so that, that's a little more of a challenge for me to.
I would make the motion to introduce the, uh, ordinance with the recommendation that goes back to planning and zoning for further development.
I second that.
Okay. More council discussion. Is it all right to add on, or I can add on afterwards to the general committee, that I can do that afterwards, okay?
And, and spell out exactly what the ordinance, are, is this the one that includes the conditional use permit into it, or not?
Yes.
Would be what's in the packet.
Yeah, okay.
To allow conditional use.
And that's where the, yeah, where the, the zoning use.
And only on properties adjacent to N R C, R one, R two, and R three.
To go back to the planning.
Yeah, we do it.
So it indicates it's, it's still alive, but there's work to be done, I think is what it mounts to.
And then you'll tell me what the general committee needs to do?
For the meeting. Give guidance to the planning commission, yes?
Yeah, well, I mean, it, I, it'll, I think it just helps if, if looking at it from a council perspective, at the real big picture, and being able to sit there and listen, I don't expect the, the general committee to, uh, try and make any statements on behalf of the council, it's just there to listen, ask questions, um, i- i- if.
I can do that now.
Okay. So, we do have a motion and a second, uh, for the first reading, uh, and send it back to the council for further.
Then you can send it back to them.
Commission, uh, for further clarity.
That's the first Thursday of the month.
Yes.
Cinca de Mayo. There you go.
Well.
That's what it says.
Get your priorities. Any.
We'll serve tacos.
Any more questions from the council? Not, uh, roll call.
Warford?
Yes.
Boop?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Creche?
Yes.
Okay, and I will ask the, uh, general committee to participate in, if possible, uh, in the next planning and zoning meeting.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Okay. So we need to, we don't have to do anything more on that than do it. No, okay. Uh, the third public hearing regarding requests for proposed amendment to ordinance eighteen eighty-six of Wahoo zoning ordinance to include a wellhead protection overlay district to protect the source water for the city of Wahoo Water System, uh, and to adopt zoning regulations, uh, providing for associated regulations in the wa- wellhead protection area. State your name and.
John Moore, representing J E O. Um, this is the end of a project that's been going on about a year and a half. It was funded through the Department of Environment and Energy Source Water Protection Grant. So there's two things that we need to have happen tonight, um, as you mentioned, to approve the plan, there's copies here, and also an ordinance, um, which is a wellhead protection overlay district. Uh, the plan is kind of the foundation of being able to do that ordinance, so. The ordinance, uh, the plan's fairly straightforward, it followed the basic five steps that the state outlines. With you passing it, it'll then be officially approved by the state and be a state-approved document, so there's benefits to that. The ordinance is intended to protect the public water supply, and what it does is it kind of gives an extra layer, um, to the city council. It'll be administered through the zoning, amended into your zoning ordinance, added to your map. Um, it does not prohibit any farming or actions that are going on, besides those that could be a threat to the drinking water supply. Um, those are listed on the second page, if you have a copy there, five twenty-six eight. Um, and it includes, um, large-scale commercial feedlots, livestock auction sale barn is allowed, but there's some limitations on stockpiling waste and giving you the ability to make sure that's managed and not a threat. Biosolid waste application, things of that nature, wouldn't be allowed. The allowed uses would be permitted, so for example, wells, which are permitted through the natural resource district, still would be, but the N R D would basically let the city know that something's gonna happen and make sure they know that it's being done correctly, same with septic systems, so. In general, that's what it does. One other thing that I, um, want to point out is the map over here, and Melissa, do you want me to hold that up, or?
Um, yeah. Or what? Just pointed, point to it here.
So what, what you're looking at here, and I'll turn it around when I'm done, the blue line is your zoning jurisdiction. The red line is your new adopted wellhead protection area, which you took up, took care of, of making that official a while back. The hatched areas are the areas that are actually in Saunders County zoning jurisdiction. So the ordinance you're passing tonight would only apply to the area you currently have zoning jurisdiction.
In the solid red, no longer.
Yes, so we had two meetings to develop this ordinance specifically, in addition to two, um, larger group meetings and an open house. Um, producers received a postcard that this project was going on, so it's been well advertised, but the, um, one step to consider if this is approved is working with Saunders County, um, to have them put this language into their zoning ordinance. So for example, if there's, um, something major going on here that's a threat to the system, you can cooperate with them to make sure it's handled in a similar manner. So that's kind of the intent of this, for those that might be here. What I just described is this would be Saunders County, Wahoo's jurisdiction, Saunders County.
So I don't know, Melissa or Travis had anything else to add?
So John, as a public meetings, what kind of feedback did you get from the public? Questions, were they well attended?
The, well, the open house unfortunately was accidentally scheduled during Wahoo, Wahoo Newman's basketball game. So honestly, the attendance wasn't that great, but the four or five people that were there were just curious what was going on, there was no opposition. I don't know if you've heard anything else, Melissa?
No, I haven't, but I will say that at the, at the smaller group meetings, we probably had fifteen or twenty people attend those, representing different agencies, where we kind of talked through the enforcement, which is this overlay district, and, um, really the potential comments that we would expect to hear from it. And so I, I'm comfortable with the language that's in here.
Yeah, that larger group included representatives from the school and businesses, um, the lower plat north, N R D, Department of Environment and Energy. Um, this has all been reviewed by Jeff Ray from J E O, who's kind of the senior planner there, and I believe the attorney's reviewed it, so it's ready to go.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll officially open up the public hearing, you've heard the presentation on the establishment and the purpose of it. Anybody in the public want to speak to this or have questions? Just one more time, anybody in the public want to speak on this question? Seeing now.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to close the public hearing. Roll call.
Creche?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Boop?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Okay.
There's actually two ordinances that you need to consider, one to adopt the plan, the other to adopt the zoning amendment and map amendment.
One at a time, or together?
They need to be separate.
Okay, I make a motion to introduce an ordinance for the, uh, wellhead protection plan.
Second.
Okay.
We're gonna do this again next time, won't we?
Mm-hmm. We don't have a super, so, yeah, leave it at that. So.
Need a roll call on that, too.
Roll call on the first reading, for that.
Creche?
Yes.
Boop?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Uh, B, B to amending the zoning regulations to add wellhead protection plan overlay zone.
So moved.
Second.
You're looking.
I'm just gonna. You're trying to ride the ball.
Any other comments from the council?
The A boys.
Okay, well, uh, roll call on the first reading.
Creche?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Boop?
Yes.
Okay, uh, moving on, action items not requiring public hearing, uh, we're back to, uh, first hearing, resolution to amend attachment one, general fees and charges to add occupation tax for a class Z liquor, alcoholic liquor, micro distillery liquor license, and attach, attachment three, plus, uh, street, uh, fund fees and changes in the fees fee for curb cutting.
So in your packet, you have information that Joe has put together regarding the curb grinding rates. Currently, they're ten dollars a linear foot, and he summarized some of the expenses that we incur anytime we go out to do that work. So his recommendation is that fee be increased to fifteen dollars per linear foot, with a minimum of two hundred and fifty dollars per job. And then the, um,
And then the, um, the amendment to the general fund fee, we have actually never had a class, uh, Z liquor license, uh, previously. And so, um, we would be adding, uh, this micro distillery as to the liquor license in line with all of the others that we have. One thing that we, is not listed on here that I would also like to ask for your approval is, um, the liquor license occup- occupation tax. As with any of the other classes, we have an occupation tax that's equal to the liquor license. The liquor license fees that we collect are actually distributed to the school per the Nebraska constitution. The occupation tax is the fee that, uh, we, the city, collect and maintain.
Questions of Melissa? What's the council's action? Okay. Have a motion and a second. Roll call on the resolution.
Yes. Creche?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Number two, approval of an interlocal agreement between the city of Wahoo and various other communities for, uh, mosquito control. Uh, this has been an ongoing approval step. Uh, the fees have changed just a little bit, uh, fifty dollars, I think it is, pretty much all the way through. And this is in agreement with, uh, the agency or department that does the spraying.
So this is a sample agreement that we would send to the communities that have previously contracted us to do the mosquito spraying. That they would then put on their agenda for consideration if they want to have us do that, so.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Any other questions? Roll call on the interlocal agreement.
Creche?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Boop?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Number three, approval of ordinance twenty-three ninety for renewal of conditional use permit for Liberty House. Chief, have you had, you haven't been here too long, but do you know of any issues that you've had at Liberty House?
Uh, no, we haven't had too many issues.
Kind of the normal?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I will, I will say this, uh, printout that you have from HHS, I know last year we had several conversations about, um, the fact that it's been, uh, quite a while since Department of Health and Human Services has, has been out to do an inspection. And so we will be, again, asking for them to, um, to, not because we believe there's things that will be wrong in the facility. But just as a matter of practice, good practice for the facility to be inspected.
So am I reading that right then? The survey and inspection information, survey date two thousand and twelve?
Uh, the last was two thousand and fourteen.
Like twice in two thousand and twelve, twice than in fourteen, but.
Not sense.
Not sense.
About time.
I think their clientele is a little bit different than when we had the first issues.
What do you mean by that?
We had a lot more calls, uh, with the type of clients that were up there. More calls to, uh, that were not emergency calls.
Oh.
That took our time and, and, uh, somebody was upset with something that was immaterial. Type of thing. I don't think there was any major.
So we don't have calls like that either?
What, no.
I will say calls there, there are down, uh, from a NEMS standpoint, from what they had been in the previous years. The last two years have been down a little bit, so.
That's a positive.
What's the council's action on this?
I move to approve. Well, this would be an ordinance.
Introduce an ordinance.
Approve the ordinance.
Twenty-three, ready.
For conditional use permit for Liberty House. The renewal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are we staying at a year?
Another year?
Yes.
Now, if we find out something from HHS, we can revisit it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we always can revisit.
If HHS finds something, they.
Yeah.
Jump into that much before we do, so.
Yeah, usually we do. Okay, uh, we'll have a, a vote on the, uh, approval of the ordinance, and it'll just be the first reading. Roll call, please.
Boop?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Creche?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Uh, number four, approval of waiver to separate, uh, submittals, separate submittals for preliminary and final flats. For a re- replat of lots one, ten, eleven, twelve, uh, and the east eighty-four feet of block thirteen, or lot thirteen, block one, stocking it second edition Wahoo. Uh, Nebraska, and it splits it into two lots. Travis, you want to address it? You're ready.
I'm ready. So this isn't, uh, how the ordinary in past, we've had quite a few these years, actually, lately. Um, I don't know, was the survey included in there? Um, basically, it's just a simple replat, like what we've been visiting here, where they've got multiple lots that they're reconfiguring property lines. So within our subdivision regulations, we have the option of kind of expediting the replating process. So we don't have to go through the preliminary process as well as the final. So this action would be basically just to allow the planning commission to recommend, uh, approval of the final plat, um, for the replat.
So we'll see it again.
Yes, so that the actual.
This just waits for preliminary. Just goes faster.
Yep, so the final plat, which is just a replat, like I said, a reconfiguration of lines, essentially, we're not grading, changing drainage, anything like that. Like a full subdivision where we have streets and that type of stuff, so.
Where is this? Sorry, I can't read that.
Oh, okay, so this is actually, uh, a property down on C Street. Um, there is three, three and almost four lots that they want to reconfigure into two lots. So that they would actually, um, it is in the floodplain, but they want to be able to split it up between family members. And, uh, so technically, they already own all those, but to clean it up, basically, so they can build a couple new houses, what they're telling me. They would elevate and build two houses down there. So, we're just recreating that to kind of make it cleaned up, so it is doable, I guess.
I'd make a motion to approve the one. Second.
Motion and second, any other discussions in the council? Roll call, please.
Warford?
Yes.
Creche?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Boop?
Yes.
Okay, um, number five, approval of recommendation from the Economic Development Committee of the city council. For the proposed development of Kennedy Campus South Hall or Camel Hall, depending which school was there. You wanna walk through that or build them or? I bet you're not as familiar with it.
What'd you say? Oh.
No. I could bumble my way through it.
Yeah. Attorney can always come up with words.
At the last council meeting, we did hear, um, briefly presentations from the two, uh, developers that submitted proposals. On the Camel Center and Basketball Court redevelopment. Actually, we heard from one. And you recommended that it be referred to the Economic Development Committee of the council, in addition to the, uh, Kevin Stewart with Park and Recreation. Um, and s- and Travis Beaver. So we did actually, uh, have a meeting the following day, or a couple days after the council meeting. And heard, spent some time conversing with the, both developers. Um, and, and then we, uh, took it back and had Travis review both proposals in terms of compliance with zoning regulations and building setbacks and, and the like. And the, um, Economic Development Committee is coming, coming forward with a recommendation to move forward with the, um, Kennedy College Community redevelopment that was submitted by Lincolnshire Investment, which is Mike Sullivan, and I think he's here if you have any further questions. Um, the, the reasons for supporting that were that it, um, it, um, sorry. It i- is designed to serve all demi- demographics with no stipulation on age, and that it was intending to make a large investment in the housing stock. Uh, nearly twice the other proposal that was received. And then secondary kind of is that it would, it is proposing reuse of the existing facility, remodeling of that. There were some conditions that the committee wanted to come forward with, and that would include, um, that there be a fenced-in multifunctional sports court that would be owned and maintained by the city on the south side of the property along Twelve Street. And that all zoning regulations, parking, setback, landscaping, percentage of lot coverage, et cetera, must be met with no waivers. Or requests for lessening or softening any of those requirements. And that if the structural analysis of that existing building reveals that it is no longer a feasibility, that potentially could bring it, um, it all back to you. I know that I put in the report, or we put in the report, neither developer has spent a ton of money and energy in this, simply because it was a conceptual proposal. So as these, as this project gets flushed out and we work, uh, towards eventually a, um, redevelopment agreement to offer the TIF. That, um, we have talked about, there'll be some questions that will come up, but that is the recommendation. So what I would be asking for from the council is action to proceed with, um, this proposal. Uh, from Lincolnshire Investments and work towards a preliminary redevelopment agreement for this project. With the intent of issuing TIF. Of course, we'd have to go through all of those process public hearings to get to approval, but it would be moving forward with this proposal.
Basically, Melissa, you're kind of looking for a letter of intent, the city's willing to work with you, you have things to flush out, but we, we like the proposals.
I don't know whether Mike has anything that he wants to add or not.
Um, yeah, I appreciate the recommendation, um, to be selected for this, uh, project. Again, just trying to re- reiterate, uh, my, uh, focus on multifamily. And improving the density of, of Wahoo, and I think this site would be, uh, great for it. Uh, yes, I would like to work through, um, the, uh, policies. Uh, that are going to be in front of me, uh, from design, um, from management, uh, et cetera. Those are things that we can work through. Uh, as the benchmarks go through on the timeline, but, um, yeah, I'm open to next steps. Um, and look forward to, you know, working through the analysis of feasibility, uh, and, and, uh, and, and whatnot. So again, thank you very much publicly for, uh, this, this, uh, acknowledgement, and I look forward to getting started on this project and, and hopefully more in the future, so.
Any questions from the council? I guess the full committee is here, so.
And me.
Karen, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I read the whole thing. No questions.
I would make a, a motion to approve.
Who's the recommendation?
Recommendation.
I can second that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the council?
And again, just for clarity, this is a, a non-binding commitment, both on behalf of the developer and on behalf of the city, because we have some things to work out. But at least now we have a clearer path of who we're trying to work it out with and what the general scope of the project is.
Thank you. Questions? Roll call, please.
Warford?
Yes.
Creche?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Boop? Abstain.
Okay. I say yes, because abstain does not count, does it?
But we would still, technically, we started with the quorum, and so even an abstention doesn't say that we, we come into a non-quorum. So we would need two out of three, which we had three, so.
Okay.
He would only come into play as a tiebreaker, not as, as a playing point, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, oh, number six, authorization, authorization for mayor to sign contract for rental of the hay ground east of the Wahoo Cemetery.
So this is the landfill cover that we have, and we have, uh, did the same farm lease last year. And we advertised in the Market Weekly, made available to several individuals. We received bids ranging from seventy-five dollars a ton to ninety-seven dollars a ton, with Ken Chaka submitting the high, high proposal. There are some limitations in the agreement that basically, uh, offer the protection of the, the clay cap that's over the top of the old landfill. So they're agreeing, they would have agreed to follow those terms. Would ask for your approval, authorization for the mayor to enter into this agreement.
Motion to approve.
Yeah.
Second.
Questions from the council? Roll call on the authorization for the mayor to sign.
Creche?
Yes.
Creche is?
Yes.
Warford?
Yes.
Boop?
Okay, number seven, uh, action related to Kennedy Campus East Hall and Gymnasium properties. Uh, we have met with the owner and, uh, so other, other interested parties. Um, and, uh, at that meeting from the city was Travis, Melissa, and myself, uh, plus our attorney, Jobin. I'll ask Jobin to, uh, summarize the discussion we had.
Yeah, and I know we, we had some discussion, obviously, about this project in, uh, closed session, the last council meeting. But, um, generally where we are is, you know, we've been working with the property owner to try to work out the terms of development agreements. So that we're not in a contentious battle over unsafe building declarations or nuisances. And like our attempt from the beginning is to try to avoid all that by simply entering in your agreement. Um, as we talked about, we thought we, we generally had this worked out back at the beginning of February. Uh, it's our understanding through, uh, the property owner's, um, council that once the, the property owner kind of further investigated cost and labor availability, material availability, that sort of thing. Uh, it caused some concern with respect to the timing that previously we had negotiated and agreed to, uh, in the agreement. And, um, so that's the reason we didn't execute, uh, the draft development agreement we had talked about back then. Um, we, we asked the, the property owner, uh, through council to propose some dates on when they thought the project might be, uh, be able to be completed. Based on amended dates, um, and the date that, um, that came back basically had a drop dead date of May first, twenty twenty-seven. For completion of the gymnasium portion of the project. Um, this committee, uh, as we've talked about in closed session, generally felt that was too long of a timeframe. Um, and didn't, didn't accurately account for material delays, labor delays, that sort of thing. Which wouldn't result in, in that extensive of a delay in this project. Um, so a- after our last council meeting and conversations with the committee, uh, we had proposed to extend what was originally agreed to in February by up to a year. So basically, the original agreement would have, uh, required the completion of this project in its totality in terms of the gymnasium portion of the project. Uh, by the end of twenty twenty-three, um, we are proposing, uh, as a committee, to extend that date automatically by six months to June first, twenty twenty-four. For completion of the gymnasium work. And, uh, to allow the property o- owner also to have up to another six-month delay. If there is in fact material or labor shortages that might necessitate, uh, a further extension of that. And so that's the date that's been floated by the city is basically the end of twenty twenty-four for completion of the project. Um, the only other issue that I'm aware of that kind of was outstanding and, and continued to be discussed was the issue of liquidated damages. I know we've talked through that as a council before, and the, and, and generally the council felt like there needs to be a liquidated damage clause. Uh, in the agreement that would provide some, uh, significant incentive to ensure the property owner completes the project by the dates, uh, that were agreed to. Uh, and without that, there's not a lot of, uh, enforcement authority that the city potentially might have if those dates just come, come by without any, any work or consideration. Um, we talked through as a group, though, that obviously the city, uh, is supportive of the project that is being proposed, wants to see, uh, the gymnasium in particular developed. And, and, in a usable state. That's for the betterment of the property owner and the city and the community at large. Um, so to the extent that the project is, is actively being worked on, we're getting close to completion, and we're towards the end of that date, certainly, what I'm. and we're towards the end of that date, certainly, what I would suggest is we sit back down and we talk about if there's another month or two months or something like that that is necessary to get to final completion. Um, rather than the application of liquidated damages, we could talk through it at that point. Um, but it'd be too difficult to discern under what conditions we would or would not extend it, how long and the like. So that would have to be a conversation for a later date, basically. Um, and so after that meeting that we had with the property owner and council, um, I did send uh the attorney the draft that basically the city had proposed previously and that we thought was agreed to. Still had the liquidated damage clause that was back there in February that we originally had agreed to and extended um that contract completion date for the gymnasium by six months and then uh up to an additional six months beyond that. And so I'd reached reached out to council uh this morning to see if if they're, how close we were to potentially reaching an agreement on that. Um, I know the property owners here certainly can can enlighten the council members that were not part of that conversation as to their thoughts, their concerns. Um, but at this stage, at least sitting here today, I haven't been given an indication that the parties are ready to sign that that draft document. And so from my perspective, there's basically three things that we as a city and the council would be looking at doing. One would be um if we think we're close and we just need some additional time to contemplate it, table this, put it on the next council meeting. Two, if we think we've had enough time and we feel that the draft as proposed just simply needs to be signed, um, then what potentially we would do is authorize uh the execution of that document um to the extent that the property owner wants to. And to me, we would also, in order to avoid delay, authorize uh Melissa and city staff to potentially hire a structural engineer if the agreement can't be signed and we have to go start the process of looking it up at the structural integrity of buildings as they currently sit. Um, the third option would be if we think we have reached an agreement, simply authorize the signing of of the agreement as drafted and presented.
Okay. A spokesman for the city? Or for the property owner, excuse me, to the city?
I got city.
Yeah.
Uh, rich man pastor of uh People Destiny Ministries. I will admit, two weeks ago, I had not seen some of you before and uh now I know your faces. I moved here in eighty-four, moved out the campus, took care of the grounds, started a church called Cathedral Praise. We were on the grounds for eleven years. During that time period, I personally started the amusement association, which is the fairgrounds. The assets of the success of that was all the people in the community from all the churches came together and helped coordinate that. I was asked to uh start a uh worship service uh for the fairgrounds on Sunday for that purpose. Uh, during that time, the facilities we had, we had our church and the uh therapist place on the Kennedy College there on Fifteenth Street. Because of the facility, we were able to host uh concerts, singing concerts there and also in the park for the community. We had banquets uh for the community where we had everyone represented from every church in town. We pulled in speakers from uh Nebraska Cornhusker football team. We conducted uh when the uh Wahoo had their winning basketball streak, we brought in special speakers and had special banquets for uh our boy players. Uh, members of my family started a uh uh middle school SCA group. We hosted uh a boys' night out of the middle school boys. We had a paintball gun fight on the campus one, a couple nights and uh we had movies for them. Uh, also, we conducted financial seminars for the people in the community. We uh also hosted uh uh parent raising seminars. All people from the churches were involved in that. Some of the things that we were involved in. Uh, during that time, we moved off the campus in ninety-five and uh we met in homes. The nurse or the, not the nursing home, but the senior center. Uh, we met in the funeral home, which is not a good place to meet, and we met at the hotel until we were able to purchase the the property, a little church on the campus. Uh, Presbyterian church that was moved in from the north uh east part of 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 the of Wahoo. And uh. So the gymnasium for us is an opportunity for us to expand things in the community that we can be an asset to the community. That's our whole purpose of holding seminars, concerts, et cetera. We will have the room and capacity to be able to do that. We can, three hundred plus people that we can, and we plan to utilize it for the effect. Uh, we have a date set in May already with our structural engineer, Lang, uh, to meet with the structural engineer from Davis to look at the gym, to give the city an update, some professional opinion. A report was pulled out in oh-six that the gym was uh uh needed some desperately repair. Lang told us that it would take time to put a report together and as soon as it's finished, he would present that through the city council. The church will immediately apply with the city to plat the two properties together, Kennedy uh Properties Lot Six and Colony Acres Two, which is the athletic field, so that will bring the property in conformity with the city, their request. Since the city is happy with our proposed plans, our architect Trent Reed will have a full set of plans completed to work with the city to make sure everything is in code by the end of August. The church will continue to interview contractors for the work on the gym. The church wants to have our contractor work with the city and sign the agreement as the church cannot promise dates on their own. And the church has given uh the date, the city a date of September the twenty, two thousand and twenty-two and putting the windows, doors and a roof on the east hall. All that has been done to finish except for the doors are left. And we are continuing to move forward as fast as possible and and to work with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the things that was discussed that um has had, they've had to alter their plan a little bit was needing to come with a a total plan for the campus, start to finish. Uh, HVAC, uh, parking, um, everything that's going to be done. And their request at one time was to be able to start and put the roof on, which I understand, you know, trying to get it. But we have to go through this process and we need a, an agreement before uh we can issue any kind of work done on there. Uh, part of it is the um engineers, uh structural engineer. Uh, Travis, do you have any questions on this proposal that's been presented verbally?
I don't think so.
Okay. Jovan?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't think we could take action on it tonight if you're, if it's something the council's certainly inclined to do. But what I'd suggest, we we table it and then council uh shows me some edits to the the proposed draft agreement and then I can run it through the committee and then bring it back to the council for further consideration. Um, probably the, I think all of the dates and the various activities really are already comply with what is being proposed in the development agreement. The only thing that was was indicated by pastor that probably doesn't is there would be no definitive timeline for when the the building permit and or the completion of the work would be done. Um, but as I understand it, the intent would be here in the fall or so. We presumably would be in a better position to set that date. So basically, we'd be kind of narrowing it down to just dealing with the next three, four months, getting a little further and then addressing the date issue that is at least I think what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, if if they're talking about an engineer coming in May, I feel like that's the first big chunk of information to begin with. So uh from my point of view, I'd be happy to table this.
I would second that.
I agree.
Motion to table any action.
Will that report be made available to the city when this structural engineer is on the bus?
Yeah, we'll need one for our record. Yeah, uh, just a comment, uh, I will say, uh, we've got, we've, they've moved the needle quite a ways. Yeah, uh, from where we uh uh have been, I'll put it that way, so. Um, now, it's not my understanding that this is going to be closer to an event center versus a ba- basketball gym. Is that?
It's it's gonna be focused around the church, but we're gonna have these other opportunities that we're gonna be using the big gym for.
Right.
Okay.
But it would not be a basketball court.
No, we have play basketball courts in this town. Some people would argue that point with me. Uh, one of the things we had, we had a basketball, we pulled from four towns, first different schools. We had junior high, senior high basketball, boys and girls, that we took from Wish Dawes to City, the morning. We played basketball and once got cut because we wanted to build into their lives. We give a character building process. And our boys at a state set a tournament took first place. They were called the Rhinos. That was a few years back. That was where the Rhinos started. Now it's in the.
It's a different.
That's who I believe now. Rhinos had tough skin. That's why we called them Rhinos. We build in, they were a tough skin. And that's what happens to your life. You gotta be tough.
Okay, so we have a motion in effect to table any action. Uh, but uh it will be recorded in the minutes as far as what was reported and you've got the notes, so. Any other questions from the council? Real call on the recommendation to table.
Warford?
Yes.
Creji?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Booth? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, mayor's comments on items on on the discussion, I don't have anything unless somebody in the council asks questions of me. Okay, council members, anything you want to discuss that has not been discussed tonight? Okay, with that in mind, uh, next meeting is May tenth. We are going to continue to meet over here. Uh, there's two reasons for that. Um, instead of having an employee stationed at the front door to direct people around to City Hall and back into the uh council uh chambers, um, felt it was probably uh a a good move. Uh, tonight with the crowd we have here, it gets pretty tight in the council chambers also. Uh, once we uh make a decision of what we might be doing with the city council in the future for redevelopment, uh, one thing that has to happen will be taking out the asbestos. And when that happens, we will have to vacate and be over here. So as of right now, we will continue our council meetings same night, but uh this will be the hosted location. If there's no other business, I entertain a motion to second to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Meeting adjourned.